All right, so it's live and recording. If you're in the right.
Really?
Yep.
My last check feature is accurate.
So. If you're chatting back here.
Is it on already?
It is.
So, we all set, Ken?
Yeah. That's the only microphone on the laptop.
Yeah.
So.
What's happening?
You're gonna have to use your featured voice.
So, we talking out and I should pick up right there, you said?
Yeah, but it's probably not gonna be great.
So, we have to be just talking out.
Wait, the microphones aren't on yet.
Yeah.
I've never been, I've never been told I have a, uh.
Quiet, quiet.
Were you asking me that?
Just testing.
So, I need, um, I need to turn on the sound.
Huh?
I think this is.
Yeah, they're telling us what we said.
It's not working?
I'll share mine with you.
Why? I mean, we all set? We have your merger?
I'm passing down, yes.
Yeah.
And anybody checked to make sure.
Thanks, folks.
Jill, I don't mind.
So, we welcome you to the board meeting tonight. We want to apologize. We did have some technical difficulties, but we're about to take off. So, with that, I call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands for our mission, our goal, our justice.
So, at this point, I'd like to adopt an agenda. Can I get a motion? Gusta first, Bob the second. All in favor? So, from here, we're gonna go on to Board of Education comments. Uh, I'm going to start with Grace. Would you like to go first, like, tonight? Change it up.
Sure. Um, I don't have. Are we good? Okay, I think we're good. I am proud to announce that after. I can just. Okay. Um, I'm proud to announce after a reading that me, Trinity Sanders, Jack Kelly, and. Uh, yesterday with, um, Mrs. Stevens, Dr. Robinson, and a few other people in this room about a policy that we want to propose to further diversify and promote equity for the Committee on Diversity and Culturalism. And I'm glad everyone will be forward with that. And we will continue to write resolutions and work with the Senate and recruit Senate to further, um, diversity and also ensure an equitable environment. Especially based on the issues of.
You all set?
I just want to, um, once again acknowledge, uh, Dr. Robinson, Dr. Wood, all the administrators here and not here. Um. Anyway, I just want to, um, acknowledge them and thank them for all of my work that they are doing to get us up and running. Sometimes I think we all forget, we all want what we want for our children. And sometimes I think we forget that, um, our community and what we want for our kids uh, is to have education however we can have it. And, and that's going to happen. And, and I think that we need to be mindful that it's being worked on and acknowledge those working on it. So, thank you and, um, look forward to what comes next.
I know. So, now, like, one of the things that we do is, um, we give updates, um, specific to the committees that we're on. The two that I feel should be mentioned, especially tonight, is the Culture and Diversity Committee. We met late July. Um, there is, um, we were introducing new members and furthering our goals or working on the goals and plan for the upcoming year. And looking forward to seeing, hearing more about what the Senate has put together. The Policy Committee also met and we're gonna, um, although not in person, uh, because of Mrs. Carmen, we received, um, some, uh, policies to review quickly for tonight's, um, first reading and, um, to accelerate the timeframe. But we'll be hearing more about that later tonight as well. I also want to, um, to recognize, uh, the, the community that is here tonight, um, our Black Indigenous, People of Color, and LGBTQIA. I know it's a mouthful, but that community, um, is, and then we have some here tonight. And I want to say that, um, I, and I believe my fellow board members will agree that share the same commitment to increase focus on the, um, the, the demands that were brought forth. I feel, um, that the Board and District are committed to equitable solutions for, um, and acknowledge the best way to do that. And acknowledge that the best way to do that is by listening to our students, whether they're former or current students. I think that's very important. And we have an opportunity to do that here. And I also feel that it, it fits with this, the profile of a Shen graduate. And I, I went back and I wanted to look at that because I feel that, that we should applaud what, what they're doing. And this is why. It, it actually, the statement actually says, um, "We want a Shen graduate who values and respects different people, expressions, and experiences, and use creativity to define and solve problems from a larger context." In the, the broader context of that document, it also goes on to say, "The students will invest in a culturally responsive and inclusive school community where respect and civility are modeled by all." And I believe we're seeing current and former students do just that. Yes, they're passionate at times, and I don't, um, see that passion as a bad thing. I think that, that, um, to, to move forward, we have to be passionate about our causes. And they're committed to being part of a solution. Um, they are standing together and they're thoughtful and sometimes passionate. As I mentioned, peaceful activism, um, will get us there. It will help us to address the systematic problems that we're talking about and solve a very real world problem. And I, I just want to say that as my opening statement and, um, thank, I'm really happy to see you here tonight as well. That is all. I will say it from my board comments.
Bob?
As on my comments.
Bob?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I think to speak about three things, uh, tonight, and they're really called all under common theme. Um, we're a district that's not satisfied with status quo. We don't rest on our rules. We've done a lot of good things, okay? But often the community expects more. This is a time there is quite a bit of passionate messaging and things we, I have not seen in my first eight years on this board. And then we need to listen. At the same time, we also need to recognize that some previous good work has set the foundation, and we need to also show respect for that. Of the three things, the first one, I wanted to commend the district for continuing to work on the ground themselves. And you notice we have the maps. Uh, we have signage. That's been about a four or five year process to get that done. A lot of changes, distractions, but the district kept its eye on the need. And we satisfied the need at a time when the opportunity was right. We did the same thing with the entry into the high school. So, two years ago, everybody was pointing out our deficiencies on safety. We understood that. And now we've got a much better entry into a high school. We didn't have life accident. It happens to be deliberate, concentrated work at the right time, right time and place. Second thing I want to talk about is reopening schools for 2020, 2021. Uh, I understand there are a lot of concerns on how we proceed there, but at the same time, we have a lot of great administrators and teachers, great staff that will figure out how to answer all the questions. We can't answer every question right now. If we run past, then I think our opening day will be just as proud as we are going through the schools as we've done this year. Figure that out. And we appreciate the comments that come back. Third thing is something I mentioned earlier in July is the need to confront racism. We have institutional bias within our culture. Schools have an important role to address that. So, we can do it, as we said, in an equitable way and talk about it at the board table to listen to. So, just to finish, it's about never resting on our rules, being satisfied, and always challenge ourselves to get better. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Karen.
I actually wanted to talk in a general way. I think it has, uh, specific and broad applications. I think with yesterday or the day before, the governor issued a a statement that was condemning a whole bunch of school districts based on the, uh, information he had that the school districts had failed to present their reopening plans. He made some valid statements. You know, if people have really not done their job at this particular point in time, you know, maybe they should be speeding up the process. But Shenandoah, along with a number, any number of other school districts, was listed as one of those school districts that hadn't submitted their plan. We had. He didn't do due diligence to determine whether that, what he was saying was true or not. Now, I think Dr. Robinson has put on the media and so forth, uh, sufficient evidence to indicate that we did indeed submit the information in the ti- and on a timely basis. Unfortunately, not everybody that heard the governor's. Not everybody that heard the governor's statement heard. Not everybody heard the governor's statement heard the rebuttal, if you will. And consequently, there's a good deal of misinformation that's going on. We have a lot of things that are changing rapidly, not just the COVID situation, not the, just the process of reopening schools, but of course, the whole issue of racial equality and justice within our own society. Expectations have, uh, changed considerably to the better. These are things that should have been addressed 100 years ago, but they weren't. Now, suddenly, we can't really expect that everything's gonna change suddenly. We're talking about a whole social change. We're talking about educating generations and retrospectively, educating the generation that is responsible for bringing up the current youth. Because after all, we are greatly shaving what youth's expectations, beliefs, and so forth are. That is not something that can be done overnight. Tearing down statues is a symbolic, symbolic thing, and it may be meaningful to people, but it basically, I see it as a sign. It, it, it means relatively little in context with creating equality. It may be a feel-good thing, but it doesn't really address the idea of what supremacy or structural racism and, and the things that really, really go deep, have deep roots. These are the things that we have to go after. We can't allow ourselves to be diverted by some people who will be demonstrating and going beyond the pale. We can't allow ourselves to be sidetracked by the fact that there's issues whether they should or should not be tearing down statues. That isn't where it's at. It's a matter of whether we recognize each other as truly children of the same creation that we all mine. We are all human beings. And each and every one of us deserves respect. That is what we need, need, need to be working on. And I feel terrible that anybody might have gone through the school system and been subject to any kind of behavior that was discriminatory. I know that, I have no doubt that those things happen. Kids can be cruel. They can be cruel on a basis of race, on how much weight you wear, as you're, you're bearing, how much, what you look like. Any one of those things could be a cost. But the way you look because of the way you were born has nothing to do with your character, has nothing to do with your worth. And that's what we need to be, be working on, recognizing that this is indeed the fact. Everybody is a worthwhile human being, deserves to be heard and respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I think we may be having some further technical difficulties with the streaming. Just by eyes. So, for my comments, I just want to touch on a few things. So, as the board has realized and I have sent out, we continue to get a lot of questions on the reopening plan. I have been on the phone, I was on the phone, uh, with a community member until quarter six tonight. Um, there are a lot of questions, as Bob has noted. There's going to be a lot of questions. We're not going to have an answer to every question right now. Uh, this will start, we will get back to school, there will be, things are going to change as we go. I, I love the, the quote, "We're building the plane as we're flying it," and that is true in this case. Uh, we've never done this before. And, uh, as Gusta said, we all need to be mindful of that. And we need to be respectful of each other and, and treat each other with kindness. Um, social media is tough. It has been tough for so many different issues that we've had in this, in this district, and this is no different. I think it's important that we get the facts where the facts lie. Uh, I have sent many of the community members to the FAQ documents, so I'm not really needing what is in that FAQ document. So, it's very important that this, that the pieces that we're putting out, people are looking at. So, that's my thought on that. Uh, the second thing is I wanted to, I know TJ is here tonight. I had a very, very mean, I, I felt it was a meaningful conversation with TJ Sangar, um, a few nights ago. And as both of my board colleagues, three of my board colleagues tonight have alluded to, um, it was, it was a conversation that I felt like I could have had with my own, my own daughter. So, I think it's very important, and one of the conversations I had with him is that when they, when they listed what they felt we were lacking in here at Shen, they used the word "demand." TJ and I had, I said, I think we agree, disagree on why we would use that word, but I, I feel like they use that word because they're not, they're not being heard. Okay? So, that's what, that's, that's the avenue they choose to go on. To demand change is good, to better society and decry, and decry racism. This board supports our young people who are using their voices to remind us that there must be equity and opportunities for all. And I'm not just talking about the color of your skin, your sexuality. That's not about, it's the, it's the equity of outcomes. It's the equity of outcomes and the equity of what we look at, housing, politics, healthcare. It's everything around us. That is important to understand. We will continue to expect and join our students to be compassionate and civic-minded. This is no longer an option. And I think we are all starting to realize that. The third thing I just wanted to bring up, and because we do get to talk about committees here, uh, so I sit on the Education Foundation, which I will be handing off the chair of that committee as soon as we can all figure out who's going to be the next chair of that committee. In doing so, we are going to move the green and white from November 14th to a TBD. We do not know when, we will do it in the spring at some point. So, definitely not something that, uh, maybe we'll look at virtual fundraising at this point, but I, I have nothing set in stone. So, I just wanted to put that out there for everybody. Okay? So, at this point, um, we have public comments. This is an opportunity, uh, for the public to address the Board of Education. Because this meeting is being held with limited in-person attendance, if you are a district resident, district resident, please send questions, comments via the BOE@shenschools.org. All questions, comments come into the office of Public Information Officer and are shared with the Board and the Superintendent. The Board will not address specific questions, comments, but ask for your name and address in the event follow-up is necessary. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Superintendent and/or designated. One thing I did forget to say tonight is that I, I remiss, I'm, I'm very sorry. Christina Rajat is not president. She brought her son, um, to Boston today. There was an accident on the mast pipe, so I don't know if she's gonna be able to make it back tonight. So, with that, do we have, I think we have, uh, a few people that would like to come up and make comment.
Yeah, you can, oh, this is good? All right. Um, yeah, yeah, uh, my name is TJ Sangar. I'm a 2019 Shen graduate and I'm a resident at Putnam Park. You know, although being told initially that we would not be allowed to speak, I appreciate it. Uh, I appreciate this opportunity to voice my concerns. Board of Education members, administrators, and other attendees, I began communicating with you on July 1st, 2020, sharing my concerns and asking for changes within the district. I was met with a double-talk political answers and resistance. As frustrated, as frustrated as you all are with being questioned, I'm frustrated that as a recent Shen graduate, myself and the young adults speaking out alongside me are having our motives and characters questioned. I am a 19-year-old. I should be relaxing, spending time with my friends and family, and enjoying my leisure time. Instead, I'm researching school board open meeting laws because as we were told by Dr. Robinson, what, um, quote, quote, "In response to the flyer that came to me 3:00 AM, the Board of Education meeting will be closed to the public," unquote. In addition to that, I've been researching school equity statistics and reading dress codes that value females and transgender. I can hold it. There's nothing fun about convincing school board members and administrators to affirm the humanity of their marginalized students. There's nothing fun about dodging cars on Route 146 because they decided to drive through our protests. There's nothing fun about standing up to those you once looked up to because they refused to listen to you and accuse you of being trendy. If Shen lived up to how the administration projects, uh, the district's diversity and work and equity and inclusion, then there wouldn't be people assembling outside of this meeting right now. And there wouldn't be students and alumni desperate to share the stories of harm and trauma inflicted on them at the hands of the Shenandoah School District. It has become clear that there is a disconnect between the work and equity and, and the work and equity and inclusion and how it is applied within the district. To, to conclude my comments, I leave you with a quote from the powerful Angela Y. Davis. "The process of empowerment cannot be simplistically defined in accordance with our own particular class interests. We must learn to lift as we climb. Please learn to lift the voices of those marginalized in your community." Before I, I pass the mic off, you know, it's nice to see you guys having these conversations and recognizing, uh, what needs to be worked on and how we clearly have these, uh, issues within our, not only our community, but our country. But it's clear that this is a conversation that needs to go beyond this, and it needs to go beyond the people here. Because if I'm gonna be honest with you, there are too many white people in this room. Because, and it's not just this room, it's this school. Because when I was in this school, I'd walk in the hallway, I didn't see a lot of people that looked like me. I didn't have my first black teacher until my senior year. I didn't read a black book, or I didn't read a book by a black author until my senior year. And I can tell you unequivocally, that is not because there aren't great books by black authors and there aren't great black teachers. You know, it's disheartening that when we reach out to teachers, they tell us, "What can we do to help you? What can we do to change our curriculum? What can we do to make this a safer environment?" They tell us that they're afraid sometimes to voice their opinion because of backlash and because of retaliation. Now, to me, that doesn't sound like the type of school district that I would want to be teaching and that I would want to send my kids to. I had an athletic director, Chris Coleman, tell me that we're being too hostile and that making demands is out of character for us. Now, let me tell you, last year, I lost my scholarship a week before I went to, uh, college. Chris Coleman didn't reach out to me. He didn't say, "What can I do to help you?" No. He waited until we were putting pressure on Shen to act as if we're friends and he knows me and tell me that that's out of character for you and you need to be more civil. Well, Mr. Coleman, if this district and the equity work was as great as you claimed it would be, then you would not be telling students who are standing up for the humanity of other marginalized students that they need to be more civil. And that they're being hostile. Because clearly, that shows flaws in the work of this district then. Because if a white administrator who's in a big position of power is telling that to a student who's trying to speak out and stand for other students, I can't imagine what he's telling the students behind the doors.
Um, I'm Spears Sangari. I graduated from Shen in 2016. Um, the first thing I wanted to talk about, I actually wanted to, um, talk directly to you, um, sir. Um, I'm hearing a lot of, uh, "We can't do this, we can't do that." And I just wanna know, like, whoever told you, you can't do something? Because last time I checked, white men get paid more, they get respected more, and they don't get marginalized in schools. I've been told my whole life I cannot do things. I played basketball at Shen, and I played basketball in college. I was forced to quit, um, in my last year in college due to racial tension on my team and because of my coach and my coaching staff. And that was the love of my life, but, I mean, it's not just that kids are cruel, it's that, it's the people you hire too. I mean, it's the books you give them. It's, it's the resources you give them. You might have the resources for, for BPOD books, but are you actually providing it? Are you actually advertising it to them? If you believe that we're all created equal, then make us equal. And I'll start talking about the discrepancies in the demands that we got from Dr. Robinson in response. So, number two, conduct an audit of all programs and address overrepresentation of BPOD and LGBTQIA+ students in disciplinary categories. After conducting the audit, a plan needs to be put in place to address the school-to-prison pipeline that the school is part of. We were told that as a part of data collection and submission to the NYSED, the district scrutinizes the data for any disproportionality. Shenandoah does not show any disproportionate trends and works hard to ensure that in this case. I'm not even gonna read the rest of it because it's a lie. I have the link right here, and less than 3.4% of black kids are in AP classes. Sounds pretty disproportionate to me. Um, number four. Our demand was make a public commitment to engage in sustained professional learning around anti-racist trauma and form pedagogy, policy, curriculum, and systems, including the decolonization of the curriculum. Um. I mean, simply having resources available for teachers that, like, because we were told that you guys provide resources to teachers, simply having resources available for teachers is not enough to ensure that the curriculum is, and the district is anti-racist. And portraying an accurate representation on black and queer history. Number eight. Honor the identity of all students by trusting that we know ourselves best and we define our identities. This includes but is not limited to rostering students the way the students feel most comfortable. Dr. Robinson replied, "The district understands and appreciates the importance of knowing students and students' voices." It is explicitly stated in the district goals document. An example of effort to operationalize the construct of knowing students is the NAME Project initiated last year. Project initiated last year in response to research, research that shows students socio-emotional teachers' failure to pronounce in their names proper. Socioemotional well-being can be negatively impacted by teachers' failure to pronounce their names properly. I was not talking about name pronunciation. This is way more than that. This is talking about our identities, our genders. We have a, we have a speaker in our group, and she's going to be a rising 10th grader. She is a transgendered black woman. She's been jumped at school by your students because of speaking out. She has gotten death threats on our march last week, the week leading up to it, she had received death threats. She wasn't going to speak that day because the guy said he was going to shoot up the commons, but she did anyway. This is the strength of your students, and you guys decide to keep us silent. She has been having problems again and again and again. She has emailed Dr. Robinson again and again and again to get her gender changed, and he has not responded. This is something so important to her, to her identity. Number 10. Number nine, actually. My apologies. Number 10. Again, your policy 4420 is extremely vague. We need something that explicitly bans the Confederate flag instead of waiting for New York State to pass the, to pass this. Shenn should take the initiative to ban the flag. If Gilderman can ban it, then we can ban it. If Niski is talking about it, then we can do that too. And it's crazy because my brother and I moved from Niski to come to here, and Niski was terrible. I was on the bus, and they would joke to me about the KKK coming to my house, coming to get me at night. And I chose to came here. I mean, I think the last thing I want to say is, I appreciate you listening to us because this is all we asked for, just to be heard.
Do we have? So, you okay to start your part on here?
Smear, TJ, I just want to, one, acknowledge your comments, acknowledge your presence, and acknowledge the fact that what you heard tonight from men at the board meetings, board members, while we all come from different places or at different places on this, this conversation point, people are generally concerned and committed. And with your work as a complimentary component, we hope that the next generation of Shenn kids will be having the same conversation. Don't personalize this because you know the communications I've been having with your father and intend to sit with him. And I hope when I do, both of you will join me because I think we do need to have a very heart-to-heart conversation about how we make what you profess into reality. Because I too had kids went through the system, and I too work in the system. So I share that with you to say that you're heard, and your voices didn't fall on deaf ear on anyone in this room, and hopefully those who might be hearing us on live stream as well. So we'll be in touch. So thank you for coming. Appreciate it very much. Just to, to continue with some further comments, and again, I just want to put a pin in that point from, from TJ and Smear, and for people who don't know, I have been in fact talking to your father, trying to figure out how do we get to a place where our conversations lend to actions? And I think we're moving closer to that. And Grace's comment earlier is indicative of the same thing because we had, what, five students, I think was it, Grace? And, and very similar thing where we have, because we're saying all the time, young people, and I think part of our role, and I certainly see my role, not only as superintendent, but being a man, a father, and everything else, is also to help, how do we help guide our kids so that their efforts are not in vain, nor have their efforts turned into another source of frustration? And just to personalize it to this board, my son, my oldest son, right now, I guarantee if he's home, he's on some type of Google chat to spend his entire summer organizing protests, organization, I want to say protesting, because there's a difference between protest, mobilization, and organization. Three very distinct things. Organizational movements in DC. And, and so, so I live it. I live it with a wife who, who spends all her research searching, "How do we teach equity?" And, and the intersection between special education and equities that special education kids face, in particular when you're black, brown, and poor special education kids in our systems, I live it. So I say that not to get credit for, I say it to say that there is a sincere place that we all come from, recognize we all come from different places because of our experiences. Hopefully, people are coming from a sincere place as they, they travel, a journey, so to speak. So, so again, I applaud Deanna for, for being upfront and, and making the connection with TJ and others, and having the conversation. And, and as I said, to all the time, my single objective is to do what is right and what is righteous, because I have no time or place to do otherwise. Because I think we're, it's a gift that we have in life, and we should use it. So, that's, with that being said, some other logistical things that I think is important for the board, and if, again, if we're connecting publicly and this will be recorded, that we share out otherwise. Some interesting news is happening in the state of New York today, which I think will be a fundamental shift. I'm not saying it's a good or bad shift. It'll be a fundamental shift in education in New York, which is, I was shocked when it happened, and I was actually on a call when it was happening, that the current chancellor attended her resignation, Dr. Betty Rosa, to take on the position of the interim commissioner of education. And so, the Board of, the Board of Regents will be acting on that to have in that effective as of August 14th. So that was a major shift in many ways for us at a time where we are dealing with a lot of uncertainties. So I continue to be optimistic that with some stabilization of leadership, we can continue to plan forward and continue to, to live up to the high standard that I think education in New York in many ways has, has stood for and will continue to be. So, so more to come on, on that, I'm sure, in the coming days and weeks in terms of what does that mean for a lot of the things that we have been doing? And so, again, I remain hopeful that this will be a positive shift and a positive momentum as we move forward, but certainly one that many people didn't expect nor see to occur. So we'll see what happens with that as well. Couple other things I want to point out as well. Again, thanks to Mr. Stevenson for, we were back and forth on a couple of different things. And Mr. Delano alluded to the governor's announcement, and I, and I want to say it's an announcement, reason why I'm making that distinction, because typically at an announcement, then there's an executive order bonded announcement that articulates certain things. To date, I personally have not seen it, but I'm probably about 200 emails deep just from today, so it could be an email somewhere, so I don't want to say that it didn't exist. But the announcement by the governor essentially saying that school districts should have more stakeholder communication and outreach. So I just want to articulate some of that in terms of what are we doing because there's some misinformation or at least misunderstanding taking place in terms of what does that mean for school districts and when we should have done something? This announcement was made on Friday, today is Tuesday, and, and so therefore, people expected we were going to do stuff on Monday. The reality of it is, it wasn't going to happen. Just like everyone else, we all have lives and we do things. In person, myself, I was busy moving my kid from Washington DC out of his apartment, and I'm so glad that Washington DC is not one of those quarantine states, because otherwise I wouldn't be here tonight for this board meeting. So, so pleased that was the case. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things that, that as, as a system, and it was alluded to by Mrs. Melton tonight, that there's been a lot of work being done by a lot of committed folks, several of who are in this room now as administrators, to, to put our plan together. Mr. Delano alluded to the fact that our plan was submitted on the 29th of July in multiple ways, and unfortunately, you have, when you have two different distinct agencies demanding the same thing from two different platforms and making reference to another platform that doesn't speak to one platform, that's what you get across the state, a lot of confusion. So needless to say, without it being said, we resubmitted everything again, just as a double-check. I mean, we were doing three times if necessary to, to make sure that people don't say what we didn't do, but our plan was in place and submitted from the 29th of July. So since that point, and the board is aware, we've had six livestream sessions with staff and community on the 21st and the 22nd of July, which were marathon sessions, three-a-day, and, and well-received. And as a result of those sessions, we received the amount of questions as well as a survey that we issued that had almost 1,800 respondents, and we received a mountain of questions from that. And as a result of that, a pretty comprehensive Q&amp;A document, the brochure version is 12 pages, the translatable version is probably 25 pages. When I say translatable, because you can go on the website and translate it to different languages if necessary, the version that's on the website versus the brochure version. So it's in two formats to make it accessible to, to, to most people. So there's been a lot of communications being pushed out. The governor's statement wants districts to have three to five public meetings prior to August 21st, with parents, and then a meeting with staff as well. And so, one of the things that, that with that, where somebody realized that these are meetings can, these online meetings, they say telephone town hall format, we're not doing a telephone meeting. We'll be doing an online format meeting where people will be able to submit questions. We try to address as many questions in that format as we can. It's not a online where we're trying to have 500 people speak at the same time, that's not a possibility. So, so we're in the process of putting that together now and trying to ensure that we have a robust platform to do so. In terms of sequence of events, and I'll share this with the board again in writing, our first session is going to focus on a completely virtual learning session, recognizing that we have had out there now for a week and a half, a little bit more, the option for people to opt in to the completed virtual session. As of this afternoon, we had 631 names listed. I don't have a breakdown at this moment with me in terms of what grades, what schools, and things of that nature. So, so that's probably around 8%, roughly, that's probably about 7% of our student population, when you kind of do the math. I'm just quickly doing the math in my head. So we're planning to do a session on Thursday, this coming Thursday, the 13th, at 3:30. We'll be publicizing that tomorrow, once we get the technology, links, and all those things, and hopefully those parents who still are sitting on the fence, so to speak, and want more information, they'll be able to access that. And myself and Dr. Wood will be on, on that call to address some of those questions, as well as we'll be, we'll start off with addresses and questions that we've already received before. And we also recognize that there are questions that we will not have answered to because they're questions that can only occur once we get into the process. Once we finalize how many kids, once we finalize exactly what I call the live nuances of school. So, so we recognize that some of those questions, we simply, we can, we can tell you what we think, but until it's there and real, those, those questions cannot be answered. The second session we'll have is one that's going to focus on safety and PPE and contact tracing. Contact tracing is a particular hot topic as well. So, so we're going to have a session on, on the 17th at 5:00 on that, and we're going to have a session on the 18th at 5:00 on operations, food services, transportation, to, to talk about some of the things related to that. And we're going to have a session, the fourth session, on the 19th at 5:00, start talking about instructional program and logistics, because hopefully by then, we'll have more concrete logistics to talk about how things will play out, more details at the program level on the 19th. And building administrators will be having sessions with staff during the week of the 17th and 21st. I think those conversations with staff are more important for them to have with building administrators and principals than it to have with me, because my comments will be more generalized across the district versus specific to a particular building. So, so they'll be having those conversations with staff during the week of August 17, 17 through 21st. Another big topic just that often comes up, and I just want to just comment here, is the whole topic of, of wearing a mask. As, as most people know, the New York State Department of, of Health guidelines specifically require that masks be worn anytime or place that individuals cannot maintain appropriate social distancing. There is clear recognition, however, that, that, that we recognize it at times, such as doing meals, and even maybe sometimes with proper social distancing, such as, quite frankly, as I sit here now, as a board, making proper social distancing between myself and board members, taking a mask break or taking your mask off is a possibility. And so, so what the general expectation is that everyone, well, first of all, in order to come into the build any of our school building, you must be wearing a mask, period. That's not even an option, and if someone says, "I don't have one," we have a temporary one to provide to you to make sure you have one. So that's a, that's a question that comes up quite often as well. Just another couple more questions. The contact tracing question is one, and ironically, I think actually the email came out on the 6th of August. I, I downward accessed it today. The Saratoga County Public Health came out with what they call their Schools in COVID FAQ. And one of the things that they outline is the process for contact tracing. Our COVID-19 point of contact in the district is Rebecca Carmen. Her backup is Joe Bush. And part of that role is to, to be the, the, the primary liaison with our school nurses when school happening, and our health providers, being our school physician and Saratoga County Health representatives. And so if, if school, if we have a, and let me back up, one of the things too, that our nurses have or will be, if they haven't already completed, the John Hopkins Contact Tracing Course, which is the course that's used as a standard across the country. So, so we have our folks go through that so they can understand fully the process of doing so. And if we have a positive case, then it would go from, from the school to our local health department, and, and just certainly as a school district, have facilitate and get as much information so that the contact tracing can occur as we move forward. Again, we'll be having more conversation in the session, we had the session about it. So there's a, we have clear protocols that's written out between for our nurses, and will be shared out otherwise to make sure that people understand how that whole thing unravels. We even talk about if, does a, does a school, does class need to stay home? If there's a class, for us to stay home until the results are known, so if there's somebody suspected to have something that's not confirmed, right now, the health department is saying, "No, until they have a positive results." The contact tracing, we would continue the safety precautions. And so, it's a departure from in the past where it was suspected, it was all everybody wanted to shut everything down, so more detail will come from that. So I'm just sharing with, with the board generally now that, that we're not only looking at what we get from the Department of Health, but thank you very much for the Saratoga County Public Health Services that, that provided this frequently Q&amp;A for schools document as well. Even the symptom screening, we have, we have, we have, if you come to the district office, you see a nice poster about the different symptoms. Even the symptom screening, um, we have, we have, we have, if you come to the district office, you see a nice poster about the different symptoms of COVID. And, and a big issue comes down with that, if somebody wakes up in the morning and has a headache and he's checked the symptoms. Yes, I have a headache and it's one of eight or 10, do you stay home? But the question is, what's the source of headache? If you had too much fun in the sun the day before, it could be the source of your headache or it could be other source. So the question is not everything automatically translates to that. You have to start to unravel and have this conversation, do I really know what's the cause of this? And if there's a real concern that it might be for something more significant, then you should stay home. Because about nine COVID-19 or not, we don't want necessarily sick people in school, period. That has always been the rule, um, prior to this, that when kids run temp, they should stay home for at least 24 hours. This all has always been the rule, um, particularly in flu season. So those things, those same kind of commonsensical things still, still apply as, as we move forward. But again, just general sharing with the board, that, that contact tracing protocols we, we have very clearly. And even communication of things, you know, that, 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 so if, 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 if we're not going to be every time this person, this year, we'll be providing information now, but people need to know that if anyone who could be potentially directly involved in a situation, those individuals be notified not only by county but by us because we often don't want someone to get the first call from the county versus a call from, from the school district. They say, hey, by the way, there's a potential and someone from the county will be calling you. So people are not panicking when they get that first call from someone who, who have no idea who's on the, on the other end of the phone. So those things are big. Transportation is a big, um, big, big, big undertaking for us. And, and the transportation things cannot be resolved until we fine tune all the programmatic pieces, including the CBL, including teachers that's going to be on leave or not on leave and all those things come into play. But regardless, we have a scenario, a trans that we think is going to work effectively. We had a meeting today about it and hopefully by the end of this week, the 14th, or maybe even by Monday, the 17th, we'll be putting our information about arrival and dismissal time from schools because people want to know when schools start. Um, so that's, that's, that goes with the transportation piece because we have to stagger transportation. Which related to that, I should have, um, said it to the board, I'm going to ask, and I just mentioned it now, ask the board, um, for the possibility of, um, an executive session, special executive session on the 18th, which is a Tuesday because we are working through some contractual pieces related to, to transportation because we have to deliver transportation differently. The timeframes are different than normal, and so we have to make some modifications to the contract. The CSC union will be voting on it on the Monday, the 17th. And if based upon that vote, I'm going to try to see if I, I can list the board to see if we have, won't be long. I'm thinking 30 minutes max, um, to vote on the MOU so that trans could do their bidding that week because everything is compressed at this point. Um, so, so, so again, my apologies, I meant to say at the beginning, but I reiterated at the end as well. Last couple of things I want to highlight aside from taking so much time. Um, a big issue out there too because the New York State Public High School Association, um, sent out some guidance related to sports and virtual learning. And, and yes, um, the, the, the current rec say an enrolled student, and if you're virtual, you're enrolled student can participate if we have extracurricular, that big if, right, if we have. Um, and, and, and you know, and there's some, there's some, um, some debates still about that because the health department kind of perspective is, um, the virtual learning was for vulnerable, either students themselves that are high risk and/or could be a potential for someone else in a need of family's high risk. So there's a disconnect between people who choose in virtual, who's supposed to, under this definition, and then, um, virtual for six hours a day, then I'm going to come to sports for potential two, three hours a day. There's a disconnect in that logic. And right now, um, there's also, um, there's a potential conversation between the two departments as well. So we're kind of watching two department meetings, state education department that has a regulation that's been on the books forever, and, uh, the, the health side of the equation. So we're going to watch to see if there's going to be any modification to that as we move forward. Hopefully we're no sooner than later on that piece of it. So when people ask me that question, my answer is, we'll see. We'll see how, how that pans out and clearly we'll follow whatever the mandates are. Well, that, that's the, that's the logic, Mr. Gilbert said, the logic, that is the logic our plan is based upon. And our plan, we, we still have a stated that if, if a parent who feels that having a child in the space is, it was a high risk for their health, um, that same high risk should translate the next hour or the next two as well. So, so again, I mean, uh, uh, one of the things that, that we have our thoughts, we have our opinions, and whatever the mandate, guidance, compliances, we'll, we'll add accordingly, um, as we see. But this is just one of those trigger that's going to, to, I think it's going to lend to, to more debate and not, um, at a state level. So we see how that pans out. And, and the last thing that people are asking and, um, is when is actually going to be the first day of school? Right now, um, based upon the calendar, the board approves, um, September 8th is technically supposed to be the first day of Super Trans Conference Day. The 9th is supposed to be for students. The reality of it is we're going to need more time during that first week to, between PD, between some orientation pieces. Um, so the plan is, um, and I say plan tentatively because the state is also supposed to be putting out, state education department is supposed to be putting out some requirements surrounding the 180 days and some potential waivers. And so I want to have that document and see that document to make sure that we don't make us, we don't solve a problem here today and create a problem tomorrow, a bigger problem tomorrow. But right now, tentatively, the thought is, um, having those four, four days, 8th, 9th, 10th, on the level of a regular calendar, right, as combination of some PD days, combination of some orientations such as sixth grade, for example. We have had to benefit in the past, having a lot of sixth graders do an orientation through the seat camp and things like that. We didn't do those kind of things. So how do we start transitioning kids in small pockets into spaces so that they're, but they're accustomed to one-way hallways or accustomed to certain things and understanding where things are? So we're going to use that week as a professional development, staff training, some orientation scheduled throughout that, 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 I said that week, those first four days. So technically, the first student day won't be until the 14th. Um, and so that's tentative right now barring any, any other regulatory things that, that, that makes that change. And, and we're, once it's official, we're putting official out there, once we know that all the i's and t's are crossed. But all these things come into play as a part of the bigger plan. And that's why it's often so difficult when people ask very specific question and you say, I can't answer that question because we have five other things that's going to impact that. And sometimes you, you're accused of, of not being transparent or otherwise. But the reality of it is we are truly committed to put together the most comprehensive plan that we can operationalize. That's the key. We can put a lot of stuff on paper, but we have to be able to operationalize it. So now we're looking at CBL, how many kids are virtual? We're looking at staffing, what's the, what's implication of staff not unable because of health reasons or being high risk, um, not being able to return? And all those kind of things, all those pieces that we have to put together, that's why those timelines become so important. So the 14th for CBL puts us, because what we get on Friday, we'll be analyzing on, on Monday, the 17th because builders need to start putting schedules and all those kind of things together with the hope of having schedules ready by the last weekend in August, first weekend in September. So people actually start saying, this is what my class looked like. And when you think about it, we're not talking about a lot of workdays in that sequence of time. Um, and so that's why all these timelines become so important for us to try to, 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 to ensure due diligence as we go along because one thing, um, does in fact impact the next, um, as we move forward. So just some, 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 some general comments that I want to share with the board. But the bigger thing is we hope some of these sessions that we have again will answer more questions. And, 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 and we know that there'll still be unanswered questions. And the reality of it is, pre-COVID, there are many things that people didn't know about school. During COVID, there are many things they still won't know. And post-COVID, there's still many things that we know because so many things, there's simply the nuances of the lived experience. When kids show up, when staff show up, we start making tweaks to make it work more effectively. Um, and, but we want to have a plan that's, that with some high degree of reasonable assurance that it will work very effectively. Then we start doing a fine tuning as, as we move forward. So again, I just want to share those general comments. Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask a quick question about the CBL? So CBL sessions on the 13th. But there, there are some that, so I'm just curious what's going to be covered in that because on the 17th, we have PP, this is all related to more stuff. But we've heard from many that get, uh, were not sure about returning their students to school because they just weren't sure about the, um, what was in place that would really protect them. And so, um...
And we will, will, will go into that, but not as much detail as we will go into the next, but enough so people have some indication.
Okay. Because there's some on the fence, they just don't know what's going to go.
Understandable. And, and also, you know, one of the things that we want to, and I often tell people, I know it's a long document, but, but make sure you kind of look at the FAQ document too. And, and, and I had someone who said, yeah, you're right, I should have looked at it before I sent you the email. And I was like, okay, that's fine, we were just fine, right? I mean, or I should have looked at it before I, I read someone else's response on Facebook. And which is fine. I mean, we know that people communicate in different ways. And, and the piece is, we're always trying to get a source for that to go to based upon, on the regulations and laws that we have to follow as a system. So, 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 um, so we anticipate, we saw some of those questions that will have, when I say generalized, not so generic, but we will have specific building things, some people want specific things. What does this look like at first grade type of questions? And we're going to try to address some of that, um, as much as we can based upon where we are right now and plan those details.
I just want to add a question for a second. May I be already asking that people are on the fence whether they want to sign on for that until they hear that session? And they don't, is that what you're saying?
So I, I'm hearing that too. I'm hearing that, um...
About the safety pieces related to it.
Yeah. Because we're not moving that, are you?
No, because we...
Are you moving that at like 14, that's why you're doing that?
Yeah, and, and I mean, again, the...
That's why I asked you. Okay, I want to make sure that...
Yeah.
Okay. Because, I mean, the, the timeline and, and you know, we, we didn't, by the way, we didn't, no, it's not a blame. The reality of it is, the pandemic is a pandemic. The reality of it is how timelines happen from the state to happen. And we're simply just trying to, 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 to be as efficient as we can, um, to, to make this a reality. And so there's a lot of work going to it every day. I said little every day, Monday through Sunday, how people are, are cranking, even when they're on vacation, um, are, are using time to jump on the Google calls or even poor internet sometimes because where they are, they take good, good things. And people sacrificing, a lot of personal sacrifices to make sure that we, we, we satisfy our, our professional obligations. And it's, I think Mrs. Miller's comment was like a great one because we all need to find a balance, um, in, in some of these conversations and, and recognizing that, that everyone's doing their job and, and we, we're trying to be as responsive as we possibly can. So hopefully sessions will, will move the, the conversation forward, um, as well. And, and the last thing I just want to mention, um, I, there's a resolution, um, since I had the floor. There's a resolution, um, which is a little bit unique to the times on the, on the table. And this was, um, this resolution was actually generated, um, through the capital region BOCs as we were having regional conversations about all the changes that are taking place all the time. And oftentimes, some of the federal and state shifts are not consistent with board policies because in many cases, board policies don't have any reference to some of these things. Their, our policies do have reference to PPEs and face masks and, and all these things prior to, in fact, we're still making some adjustments. You're going to hear tonight, um, Mrs. Carmen, there's one policy that was up for second reading that we're going to ask the board to pull off tonight because of something that just came out recently that we're going to add to that policy. It's one that's approved policy, then the next week we bring it back again. It's just to show what we're talking about as, as examples. So, so, so this policy, um, resolution isn't about the board advocating, um, their responsibility as a board. This is, is basically saying that the board recognizing that, that there's certain, um, um, demands from the state or the federal that's, that could be conflicting, um, with the current board policy. And, and basically allowing, same way the board give me authority through their action to, to administer the policies, the district, to, to ensure that we're in compliance with those federal state laws. Um, and, and recognizing that our policy process takes, uh, minimally a month when we go through first and second reading. And we don't have a month ever in any of the things that we're doing. Um, and so, so this is still very much, uh, a governance, uh, matter of the governance. And anything that we do, decision otherwise, comes back to the board either in some kind of action or some kind of direct communication. So I want to make sure I clarify that because sometimes people, people hear board, um, passing resolutions and things of that nature and jump to, to different conclusions. Um, and I said it because I saw one correspondence came from someone about that and far from what the person alluded to at all. And this is something that, that either regionally, could be statewide, people recognize that. Because the last thing we want to do is take an action that's inconsistent with board policy that might be consistent with federal law. And you'll say law oversee policy, but out of how we function and law and governance, we've always tried to align those two things together as much as, as we possibly can. Uh, so I just wanted to, to bring that up too, to put that whole thing in context because I think the context is important when people hear about those type of things. And I'm sure that once we get to that action item, um, there could be others comments by, by board members as well. So longer than I anticipated, but thank you very much, uh, Mrs. Davis, for the time.
So at this point, we're going to go into the information items. Um, we're going to do the claims audit report. Mrs. Chase? Does anybody have any questions, Mrs. Chase?
I think there's a lot of catch up with that one because we did meet in June and so it was from January too. Although Rich, uh, he had a couple of desert plans, he's one of the desert plans on us. And he, um, he's, he was on side, he still kept it on with it. Um, it's just, we didn't have our June meetings, so there, there's a lot there. Okay, there's a lot coming. And he did share with us, um, some feedback that, um, was needed, um, but nothing that, um, remains as important in this context.
Um, the only thing I want to add from the minutes, um, the second post is that, um, I just wanted to comment. Well, all I was going to say is CUSAC, they also have that meeting in June, CUSAC and company are internal auditors, um, to launch the audit. And they, um, because of Kathy and our team, they've actually, it looks like they're, they're going to hit their, their targets, um, which means, um, first, first board business meeting in October. They're going to present a draft of the report. So we're, we're watching on schedule. And that was the one point I wanted to share the minutes.
Kathy, did you have any comments for the minutes or anything?
Hey, just any question.
Any kind of questions from the board? Okay. And then the board presentation schedule is C, so we get that every year, right? This is the document. Anybody subject to change totally this morning?
Well, going with what we have now, um, I, I thought there's a few additions in there, uh, particularly along the line of inquiry of COVID-related racism. And, and I think that, not for this meeting, but if we work potentially next meeting or potentially during a board retreat, consider scheduling something on a monthly basis. Mr. Delato, I think he pointed out, we brought up several videos he detached from the board that, that really started the process two years ago. And I think if we put some additions in there, I, I think if we're talking about ways potentially, you know, whether we call it advantage, whether we call it grievances, you know, you can, you can take this approach by discussing and having conversations on a monthly basis around specific topics. And that may be worth adding in, and there's time to do it. And I think what that does, rather than having a staring moment when everybody is passionately going after the symbols, okay, you also need to look for opportunities throughout a year where you can deliberately converse about an issue. And I think that's, that, that's where I think we do very well. We have our committees that do this very well. And so I'll just suggest that in the future scheduling.
Can I ask a question?
Actually, so I just wanted to clarify that, Mr. President, you were basically saying for the board's discussion, not necessarily giving presentations, just for the board to have monthly topic discussions? Yes, yes, okay. Just wanted to make sure because one of the things we hope will come out of the student conversation is, I'm not sure it's going to be monthly, but regular, um, pieces from the committee once we get the student engagement. And who knows, Grace might be the, one of the spokespersons as well. So, but it's great though that the board itself, or as a bodies, have the conversation. I think that's a great thing versus what we do in... I think that's a great thing versus what we do in the ministry and then presenting to the board. That's important, but board conversation, things equally, or probably more important than board.
One of your responses that I get today mentioned that this is not a once and done. And I think the idea of having periodic discussions over it. The reality is that this is going to be a constant, probably for generations. And I have like a mental image, you had a fire, you brought the fire department in. They put the fire out, they don't go away, they stay there with their hoses to let the fire down, make sure it doesn't come back out. That's the approach we have. You have to put the fire out, and then we have to be there to put more water on it so it doesn't flare up.
And I think this goes hand in hand with, I know Augusta has brought this up too, to have more robust conversations around the board table. So this is certainly, you know, we'll start it with the retreat and then they can certainly focus on how we all institutionize that.
Like I mentioned, even though we have podcasts, there have been certain board meetings where, as a board, overwhelmed with PowerPoint presentations and forty to fifty page. By the end of that, halfway through, we're loose on it. And so by maybe structuring the board meeting, maybe some of that information is crap, petted on it, that we don't go through during the board meeting, and then during board meeting, we have the general discussion.
Because we send our presentation in advance, and we just, you look at it, and we can have a person here say, what questions you have, and engage in the conversation.
There are nice ones, we have presentations, we have teachers here. We have teachers here tonight, they're doing presentations, I think horrible.
And then the board liaison assignments, you all know these. We kind of need to firm these up because Dr. Robinson will need to get them to the administrators. I know Naomi had put out a compromise out today. It all depends on the policy. I mean, we have three people, I think that's a little overkill. So somebody's got to be an alternate.
Actually, the only thing I would say is, especially now more than ever, having three and not saying one, only be there, I think keep it open. I also think that the cultural diversity committee should be rotating, it shouldn't just a couple of board members. It should, all of us should be cycling on the committee throughout the year. So there are a couple that I think that are very important and we should not restrict ourselves. We should, we should think out of the box and do it a little differently than we have in the past. And so we could also do that with policy. I just want to say, I'm perfectly happy rotating on the university committee. I would like an opportunity.
Yeah, new people, I think everybody should, I have not even sat on the policy committee yet. I should be on the committee at some point.
And which is why I said, there's so much I've been on since the day I stepped on the board. And I think others should also step into those roles as well. I mentioned the audit committee, I feel that that one will, I think it's good to be with that person for the first year and then move on. But the other, the other one, I think it's easier, you know, someone else should swap on with the two that I presented, so.
I've done audit committee before, I don't mind. I will tell you, the one issue I have is on the TDA for Saba. I have a full-time job, so I can't be working.
We will, we'll figure that one out.
Chango was, I think, eight AM Fridays. I can do that, so I'm happy to switch around.
Okay, maybe you and Kristi Andrew switch.
Everybody counts a backup at meetings, you know what I mean?
And so Vanessa, if you can just give me 24 hours on this and then we'll figure it out. Bob, why don't we have a conversation too about policy and how the best way to do this? Thank you. Any further comments on that? Okay, and then A, tax levy and warrants analysis. Mrs. Chase? This is always interesting.
Okay. Yes, interesting because the rate is going down again this year. As we predicted during the budget season, we expected it was going to go down slightly. I think with less than one percent, and it's actually going down 1.31%. That's the full value rate. And you can see over the last three years, it's actually gone every year or so. It's a good trend to have. You will see though, in Clifton Park and Stillwater, that those rates in that last column are pluses. And the reason is because those equalization rates have dropped. And you'll see that on a future slide, but that's why those are not decreasing like the others have. This just shows you the full value comparison, percentage increase by town. Certainly, obviously, Clifton Park and Half Moon are the largest towns with taxable assessed value in our district. Equalization rates, as I mentioned, both Stillwater and Clifton Park dropped significantly this year. So that's why the rates are not dropping like the other ones are. We have nothing to do with the equalization rate, so it's whatever the town assessors report to us and whatever the state approves for them. And then this is the taxable assessed value. This is before the equalization rate is applied. And you can see again, a total increase of 1.69%. That always helps our tax rate. And this just kind of gives you a comparison of both the full value assessment, where everybody's actually at $100,000, applying the equalization rate. So you can see that the comparison between taxable assessed value and full value. So ultimately, everybody with a full value assessment is going to have the same annual taxes. And then last but not least, just a little graph that shows you the decline that we're seeing in the last few years.
Do you think the reason why it's going down further than expected is because of a surge? I mean, it's definitely a salary shortage. Surge in homes flipping.
Could be.
If they pull up their assessment, it's the full assessment, that what the tax is based on.
It's kind of partially, but when you look at this, since the 2019, 2020 assessment, growth was 1.74, and this 1.69, so overall assessment was actually slightly down. Flat, you know, I'm not going to say slight, it's literally 1.74, 1.69. But there's, so there's a, and the curve actually has been doing this. The growth, the growth curve, not the value curve. So it's a matter of how fast are we growing more so than not. So I think we went from the down market, when everyone crashed in the down market, we stabilized. And so you see the stabilization for us was still in the plus. A lot of places, the stabilization was in the negative and trying to come back up above zero. We stayed above 1.76 and 1.69%. And so I think fast forward a year from now, what you're talking about will be reflected in either further stabilization or slightly increase again because of the lag effect of the market space.
Of course.
Any other comments for Mrs. Chase? Thanks Kathy. And policies, first reading. Carmen, any comments?
So I'm kidding.
Oh, wait, this is the first reading.
Yeah, so this is first reading being presented. And, you know, thank you very much for allowing us to be on, as we know with the situation we're dealing with COVID. We want to continue operations while maintaining safety. We need to adjust some of the policies to be able to accommodate that. So the policies that you see there, there's not a lot. There's a few of them, the transportation, recruitment and hiring, that one isn't. We look to digital hiring and looking at interviewing digitally. A lot of the processes now are all in digital format. And you'll see that you don't have the forms there linked to the policies for first reading as they're Google forms, and I couldn't figure out how to put them on because they're Google forms. So everything is digital in regards to the recruitment and hiring. Then we have, what is new in regards to the leave of absence, that is new. And in addition, we are recommending that rescinding the military leave and the family leave and embedding it into the regulation. So it's all in one spot now, and people don't have to look in different places. So that's first reading. Any questions regarding any of those?
It was impressive, by the way, how fast it seems to put that together.
Thank you, and human resources was very helpful. And the last piece that I just want to comment before I get to second reading, I just want to make a note. We are asking for the second reading that 5691, which is communicable diseases, be pulled because there are changes every single day to that. And we don't want to have to keep changing it. It's mostly in the regulation anyway, so hopefully bringing that forth next month.
Thank you, Becky. Moving on to consent items. Trace Ruth's report. Can I get a motion? Todd, second, Naomi, all in favor? All right, good, great. Forgot to say comments, but. Okay, minutes, June 5th meeting. Can I get a motion? No, because nobody missed all three, so that's good. Okay, so we can combine, yes. June 5th, June 7th, June 28th, everybody was here, so can I get a motion? Augusta was first, Bob is second. Comments, questions, all in favor? Okay, action items. Adoption of the 2021 tax levy. Can I get a motion? Bob is first, Todd is second. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes. Number two, approval of district emergency response plan and save committee members. Can I get a motion? Todd is one, Gary is second. Any questions?
So it's obviously not intended to be detailed, and we understand the reasons. But with the updates, is it reflective of the current situation in COVID? Or does it, with school being back in, with, so just like a policy, I was curious how it's worked in for this too?
And I'm going to say generally yes in the building, but this is still a very small state company.
Okay. Oh, so it doesn't?
So we have one nuances in the building level and in the district level one. But that addressed your question.
Thanks, Becky. Number three, approval of closure of repair reserve. Oh, we didn't vote, okay, sorry, can I get it first? Augusta. Oh, I'm sorry, Augusta, okay, any questions or, I'm sorry. All in favor? Go. Yes, all right, sorry. Three, approval of closure of repair reserve. Can I get a motion? Todd, second, Augusta, any questions? All in favor? Motion passes. I'm going to combine four and five. Bid for elementary science supplies and bid rescind and reward Gary. Can I get a first? Motion. Bob, second, Augusta? Any concerns or questions?
Yeah, so with the elementary science supplies, this may not be said, but those who go proceed down, will they also get the same materials?
Hard to say, some of it is going to be demonstrations that the teachers will be conducting and recording virtually because it's going to be harder to share supplies even in the classroom.
Okay, so the supplies, it'll all be virtual, they won't actually get the other kids' material.
I'm not using the word all with many things right now, but most of it will be virtual. Yes, and recorded, yep.
Can I, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. I'm going to combine six, seven and eight, contract extension, special ed access therapy group contracts, IMS, Dell computer, First Light, Bronco, contracts, special ed tuition, center for disability service, Langin School, Crossroads Center for Children, the South School, Northeast Parent and Child Society, Parsons Child and Family Center, Neil Hellman School, Wildwood Programs. Can I get a motion? Can I do a motion first? Naomi, second, Augusta, questions, concerns?
So for a couple of these, it's actually the same question. And so for example, like with the therapy group, it's the second extension. And then with the IMS supplies like Bronco, these are bigger contracts and it's like an extension, so.
Sign system, pay system.
Right, so for these, do you, what is the process for getting a rebid? Or, I mean, it could be a sole source.
Well, some of them is sole source situation, we get reprice every year, but we don't want, we want to make sure we get price. Because you kind of know the market space asked for. So some of it is sole source, like PA system. We have to have different company committed service PA when it's a bigger brand that go through a certain thing.
And that's the case with WACO?
I think WACO would be one of those.
And then for the access therapy group, for that one?
That's on block placement services too, right?
Yeah, we produce for RFP this year. Oh, we are, okay.
Any other questions on this? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Number nine, scholarship and local grant donations with gratitude. Can I get a motion? Todd, second, Bob. Questions, concerns? Hearing none, can I, all in favor? Motion passes. And now, this is my log, acceptance of special ed.
Could you think, any questions on the recommendations from the committees on preschool and school age special education?
Hearing none, can I get a motion? Todd, first, second, Augusta? No comments, all in favor? Motion passes. Personnel, Mrs. Bush?
Good evening. I'd like to draw the board's attention to some recommendations from the committee. We are recommending Jennifer Lee Alden for a class assistant principal position. She will be replacing Matt Heckman, who moved to another school. And she's under actually like a modification, sorry, she's under a modification. Jen currently is a music teacher at Chango, and so she'll be recommended as a class assistant.
She was our summer school, she was principal for five years, so this one makes sure she's not ducking music. This one clarified it, so she's well versed in the secondary background.
Yes, sorry. We also have several new teachers on the board agenda, I won't read all their names, but someone had asked, we have new teacher orientation on the 14th, and we have 24 new teachers. Yes, eight elementary, two special education, four music, one Spanish, and five related service providers, which are school counselors and school psychologists. Many of those are replacement positions for folks that had retired, and a couple are part-time people. And I'd like to recognize retirements, if we could, at this time. These are classified support staff. Diane Bosamo is retiring after 14 years as a school monitor. Deborah Blair, 27 years as a bus driver. Joanne Ellison, 26 years as a school monitor. Carol Larson, 26 years as a school monitor. Dennis Matisse, 21 years as a school monitor. Grace Post, 20 years teacher aide. Sandra Sayet, 12 years teacher aide. And Penny Thompson, 14 years school nurse. So those are our upcoming retirements. Take care.
Normally at this time of year or certainly by the next meeting, we know whether we still have positions to fill or not, so, or given the dynamics of the situation, we have a handle on where we are in terms of hiring at this point.
So yes, it's for this moment today, yes. But the reality of this is just not even some of the retirees, we have people who still make decisions, like retirements. I think for the most part we do because we're trying to get some sense of who's going to be back so we see what capacity, and then who we need to backfill our capacity and not so we can have the capacity in the coming weeks. So I would say we're in a good place from a hiring perspective. But uncertainty, I think, has still been more tenuous this year than in past years because all other circumstances have been people's lives that they're making some of the decisions in short order. And so I wouldn't be surprised, honestly, if we see some additional retirements in the coming week or so. I really wouldn't be surprised to be a crunch for us because it takes a couple of weeks to go through that process, but people still make decisions and we have to be able to adjust accordingly.
What's that New York state effect?
So the question is, there was conversation, there was a bell floating around about retirement incentive. It's actually, it's nowhere right now.
retirement incentive, it's actually, it's nowhere right now, so to speak. I'm not sure I'm a distraction, we're going back to move through the old houses so we can get to the governor, so right now, right now, there's a lot of chatter about it, and people are hoping they're back in. In many ways, we have nothing, we're seeing mass exodus by people who, of the realities of the situation, unfortunate realities of the situation. No further comments for Mrs. Bush? Can I get a motion? Todd, first, Bob, second. Further questions, all in favor? Motion passes. And then for second reading, Mrs. Carmen.
Again, just a reminder that 5691 communicable disease, we're calling out until the next meeting. Any questions regarding second reading?
Can I get a motion? Gusta first, Bob second. Comments? All in favor? Motion passes. And then Dr. Robinson, resolutions to address conflicting policies. Want to add anything? So again, the resolution, actually the language was generated through the Capitol region OCs, and then the attorneys through the Capitol region OCs. And the reason why we're doing that, because it's a regional approach to many things that we're doing, and regionally, people recognize that there's so many things that happen so quickly, that we need to make those adjustments important. So this was the recommended policy that, quite frankly, we're using here at SHANNA for recommendation to read them as well. So if there are questions, try to address the questions based on some feedback I received from the OCC, we're going to set, so to be clear, what you're saying here is, this resolution will give you the ability, there's a policy that has an issue, it will give you the power to make an amendment until we can formally change the policy. If there's a requirement that comes out that's conflicting with our policy, it allows me to implement that requirement, and then we'll make the adjustments to policy according to that.
So it's still going to get approved?
Exactly, exactly.
Just walking the time.
Exactly, exactly.
Did you want to end it, are we ending?
So there's a conversation about the December 31st piece in that review of the court link, so I can modify the language afterwards, and maybe in this second, now therefore, having this last one shall be effective until December 31st, 2020, as the last statement, so I can modify that if this board is ready to.
And then we can always look at it again in December and extend if, you know.
So we have a different set of circumstances.
Exactly, exactly. And December 31st, that does think how the dates are used in the policy that was on the second reading, the first reading tonight. So it does make a lot of sense.
So we're making a modification to this version for the, and we're going to make sure you're happy to. Does anybody have any further comments on that, then?
Just Gary. Or one clarification to suspend any policy or I assume portion thereof.
Yeah, that's conflicting, that's correct. Yeah, because now all the whole language might be conflicting there. Can I get a motion? Naomi first, Gusta second. Get our comments, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay, any further public comments?
Grace, would you like to say something?
Sure.
Can you just give Grace the mic, so you can pick up on the.
Oh, here.
Turn it, yeah, turn it away from her.
I just wanted to say, now that, obviously sitting here as institute representative, I can't speak for everyone, but I will do my best to speak for whoever I can and everyone that I can. And, you know, right now and throughout many years that I have been at SHANNA, well, I haven't been here since comparative, I've wanted to, you know, make a change, and I've seen a lot of students who have also wanted to do that. And I'm both proud and very happy right now that there are students wishing to do so. And I did just want to make a statement that, you know, as a student, I can't speak on behalf of an experience that I didn't have, but no matter what, am I going to amplify those who had that experience so that other courses are going to be here? And I did just want to, you know, say that now, that we had a chance to hear, you know, students of color, speak their stories and speak on behalf of their own experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, I don't know the upcoming meetings, 99% sure I will not be there over 20 minutes.
You did mention that before, Todd.
Something changes on you.
Yeah, so, yeah. And for the board retreat, we do have the items that we will be vetting that night. If there's any further comments, please do not hesitate to send them my way. I think we have a pretty healthy agenda that night, so that'll be very good. Yeah.
So if I could just add, minis must virtual this year, and something will become announced soon for registration for that, and also graduation is this conference, I would be in my school, yes, decided for that.
It is. Vanessa, will you help us with the virtual when that comes to, thank you very much. And I have one question, we talked about materials for online learning. Dr. Wood didn't mention like a math book or things like that. When that comes to virtual learning, will there be supplies? I'm thinking about math, only because math is just one of those subjects that you just have to, it's like a Friday.
I mean.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, so with that, motion to adjourn. Todd first, Bob second, all in favor?
I'll just leave you right here. Right there. Nobody can. Thank you.
Lead over here, yeah, try and.
I just sent, yeah, because the mic, two of the like.
Why are they not here? Why do we not own the system? So we contracted with somebody? And they're never here when we need them, or why was it unplugged? Why did you?
Oh, the cobwebs.
Well, I've seen it unlocked, so it's even accessible.
This was out, this was out today, I came by earlier today to check. And this was.
This is just, oh, no, is this?
Yeah, I actually, Dr. Wood, I, I'm going to talk today because Dave and I were. I suspected that there's, that the B break, all this is very similar, if not not one. The problem, we could do the OBS easy and stream it.